...to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, thank you for all the many blessings you've given each one of us, and God, I just thank you for your grace, for your mercy. God, we just pray that you be with us tonight as we discuss business for the school district, and I pray that you would just give us wisdom, God, to be good stewards of what the district's been blessed with, and God, as we make decisions, help those decisions to honor you, and God, I just pray that you would just be with all the teachers and staff this summer as they have a time to rest and recuperate from the year, and God, get them recharged for next year, and God, I just pray that you would be with all the things that are still going on within the district, God, I pray that you would help everything to go smoothly this summer, God, just bless this meeting tonight in Jesus' name, amen.
We have a forum, expect to call the June 5th, 2023 Huntsville Board of Education meeting order, we do have a forum, so I'm going to welcome our employees and guests. Mr. Warren, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I would specifically like to welcome Ms. Swaffer here, this is her first board meeting, so welcome the board. First item on my agenda is the consent agenda, you can see the agenda for tonight, the minutes from the last meeting in May, and our district financial report, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Can I get a motion? First by Nick, second by Josh, all in favor?
Okay, next, we have special reports, first up is our FCC LA request for out-of-state travel. Let's go to the band, and then we'll see if they arrive. So if we can go ahead and go to the band. Sir Johnson, before you get started, Mr. Johnson, whenever, I just want to announce that he has brought music that our kids played, and there's proprietary things associated with it, so we will stop the live stream, but we will mute it, so only the people here will be able to hear the music that is played.
Thank you, just sign my name on the bottom.
Right. You don't want to introduce Johnson, right?
Yeah. No, thank you for letting me tell you about our trip this spring break that you got races for in December for Let Us Go, and not only is it a reward trip for the band students that have done at least thirty-five to forty performances a year, and it's kind of like a thank you, but we also do a clinic when we're there, that we record music in a recording environment, which Courtney's going to speak and tell you about that, so I don't want to give it all away, but that they record the music, play the music they recorded, and then they show them how they sync it with the video, with the animation when they're actually recording for Disney. We're in their Disney recording studio, and I think one of the biggest things is they tell the students, this is a one-time shop, that time is money, and that when you're a professional musician, that you play, and you really can't make mistakes, you get the music beforehand, and you perform it, and so what they did with the band is they went through seven or eight pieces, and they only got to see it one time, and what I liked the best is really for me is they had headphones on with a clip track, but they had one ear on and one ear off, so they could hear the band playing with one ear, and they simulated the environment, what you would do if you were a professional musician, they're recording music for the animation, and this is how they do it. They had a guest clinician that worked for Disney and was a professional musician, and so it was like the real thing, and it was pretty fast, and they did it for two hours, I think it was two hours. So this is Courtney Phillips, she went with the trip on us, and she's part of the band, and she's going to tell you kind of from a student's perspective how that went. Thank you for that.
Hi, I had such a fun time at Disney this year, we went to a clinic where we got to play a lot of different Disney songs, we had the best time, I was excited to be able to do this clinic, and I learned so much. Our guest clinician made it very fun for us, he even played his saxophone for us, he plays the saxophone professionally. We had no clue what songs we were playing because there were no titles on the songs. He would have us try to guess what song we played. At the end of the clinic, we were able to watch a video that was made while we were playing the Disney song that the clinician picked out, which was I See the Light from Tangled. It was a great video, I am so glad that I got to experience this with my friends.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
And any decisions that you may make regarding the medical care of our students and our staff. You know, times have really changed. As I'm helping to plan my class reunion this year, and we'll talk about that, that's in big double digits. That, you know, when I was in school, we didn't have a school nurse. The school secretary was the person that we went to. And she was the one who handed a Band-Aid or said, you know, hold pressure on this, or called our parents. And, you know, I don't even remember having, having a classmate or a, or someone within my school that I knew that had diabetes, or asthma, or that had to have major surgery, or a heart transplant, you know? And heaven forbid, back then, peanut allergy. Because, you know, one of our staples then was, I think, peanut butter and, and maybe honey sandwiches. That was one, was one of our things on there. But those things that I, that I just mentioned are something that we deal with on a daily basis. When, the first year that I came to Huntsville, I had three students in high, in the high school building that had heart transplants. And so there was a little bit of, okay, I gotta, I gotta catch up on that because that wasn't what I had been dealing with. You have five full-time nurses in the Huntsville School District. You have three LP, or four LPNs and one registered nurse. At least one registered nurse is required by the state and because of the standards set forth by the Arkansas State Board of Nursing. And the nurses that we, that we have here are over about 110 years of, of experience. The nursing and education is kind of round pegs trying to fit into square holes. Okay? And so to kind of explain the difference of what the levels of nursing that we have to put it in education realms. You have a bachelor degree teacher, that would be your LPN. You have a master's degree teacher, that would be your RN. Okay? During the school year, there were 20,580 visits to the school nurses. Of that, 19,523 returned to class. That's less than 1% were actually sent home. The national average is 10% or greater. So the nurses do a good job at getting our kids back in class. We did have six that we sent out by ambulance this year. And the EMS is very familiar with where the nurses' offices, offices are. And then, of course, we had more that were sent home with their parent with instructions that they needed to seek medical care. It wasn't an emergent situation, but they did need some medical assistance far beyond what we could, what we could do. There've been some comments this year that nurses, that students hang out in the nurses' office. And in essence, that would be correct. Okay? Students are there when they don't feel well. They're there when, for whatever reason, they didn't get enough rest at night. And they're getting in trouble in class because they're falling asleep. So maybe a 10-minute power nap will keep them from getting in trouble in the next classes. They have fever, or vomiting, or other issues. So the nurses' office is where those kids can be found. Remember that students with active disease processes, you know, we try to exclude them from other children and adults so that we're not spreading and making other, other people sick. You know, sometimes when we call parents, it takes several phone calls to try to reach somebody because they're not in service, or whatever, you know, they're not by their phone. And then, of course, we have to wait for someone to come and get those kids. And depending on where parents are, you know, it may be, it may be 10 minutes, and it may be two or three hours. So, so they get to hang out with the nurse. We did, district-wide, we had 50, 50 students that had daily medicine medications at least once a day. Some of those are twins, okay? We do health screenings. We provide health screenings for our students, which are hearing, vision, BMI, and scoliosis. And there was 2,300 of those that conducted this year. Not listed in, in those numbers are over-the-counter medications that we give because someone has a headache or a stomach ache, nor the, nor the visits that we deal with, with our adult population because the teacher didn't feel well. Okay? We have personal care. Ms. McCollum isn't here, but we have personal care. Personal care is a program where a student is provided with a one-to-one aide for activities of daily living so that they can, so that they can attend school. And at the end of May, we bill for 100, for 912 hours. Now, we're paid in increments, minutes. But, and if you add that up, that comes to about 55,000 hours. I want to give a shout-out to the parapros, the paraprofessionals who do that job because those hours are, are a direct result of their work with these kids. And we do have some students that are in the summer program for personal care this summer, so there will be some more, a little bit of more billing within the end of the month. I know that we now record our board meetings and they're live-streamed, which was something that we didn't used to do. So I wanted to give a little bit of information about immunizations. At the beginning of the year, every nurse has to run a report to see if every student that is enrolled are up to date on immunizations or have the paperwork for an exemption. And this year, we're very fortunate that the Arkansas Department of Health, and more specifically for us, the Madison County Health Unit, they are making calls this summer to students that we already know are going to need vaccines before school starts, and they're making appointments. So as parents are listening tonight, and you know somebody or it's your child, if you get a strange phone call, listen to your voicemail, or return that phone call since it's going to be local, and see if it is that your child needs a vaccine and they're setting up an appointment for you. You know, the immunization laws are that, you know, it says that new students to the district have 30 days to comply with, with those regulations. And most all schools, courtesy, give every student that 30-day window. And so that's a big undertaking at the beginning of school. And as anyone knows in this room, anything education has a deadline, has a dead, the first deadline of October 1. And it's like salmon swimming upstream, trying to get from the beginning of school on that first day to October 1 and meeting all those deadlines on, on October 1. The other thing that I wanted to mention for parents are medical update forms. We send those out at the beginning of school. I know, I believe, that some people think that those are kind of intrusive, and we're being nosy because of questions that we ask. But it helps us to better take care of our student if we know that our student has a health issue. So when they come in with a stomach ache, we understand that they're taking a specific medicine at home, and this is one of the possible side effects. And so we know how to better take care of them. Again, those will be handed out that first, that first week of school, and we just ask that parents work really diligent to get those turned back in for us. And, you know, I want to thank you for, you know, the support that you give the nurses and our continuing education that we get. And that's what I have.
Thank you.
I would, I would just like to add, Ms. Plumley wants, yes, she does take care of teachers. And for parents who forget to update the medical, even just their numbers, even not on the medical, just on school records, there's nothing scarier than having some sort of emergency and not being able to get hold of a parent because we do not have the right numbers. So if you're out there listening, make sure you, we got them.
And, and that does happen a lot through the year, where the first numbers that are turned in, and then something happens, whatever, whatever happens, and the numbers that we have are not, are not correct. One other thing I forgot to mention was CPR and stop the bleed. We certified 127 seniors this year for that, as well as 74 staff members. And so that's a big undertaking for the nurses as well.
Okay, moving on to the next item, that is superintendent's reports. We have the financial projection report. It looks very good this month, and we can, we predict that it will finish up the year really well. Quite honestly, when we look at our revenue that we have still, that we feel like is still coming, we're talking about it today, you know, it could be as good or as, or a little bit better even than what we're looking at right now. But right now, we're projected to finish over $600,000 above the beginning balance from this year. So all the efforts and the, the things that have taken place this year seem to have paid off with one month left in our fiscal year. So I'm always cautious to say that this is, this is it, but I think that we're in, we're in really good financial shape right now. It took a little bit to get there, took a lot of work. It's a hard effort on the, on the part of the entire district, and it's not easy. So I appreciate everybody that went into that and did that, so. Next thing is the enrollment report. The end-of-the-year enrollment report looks a little bit different than, than the rest of the year. You'll see the first two pages are the actual end-of-the-year last-day school enrollment. We were at 2,233 at the very end of the year. That was down again from our statistics in May. The last page is the summary sheet. We will still have our 3/4 ADM for this year at 2,257. And that will be on the basis of our funding for the next fiscal year. And we're already starting to get some projection reports for that information, so we can start budgeting for next year.
That first grade class is huge. Like, I knew it was big, but I didn't know it was.
They're all the ones that registered in from COVID.
180, I mean, that's all.
That's, that's our, yeah, juniors.
What's kindergarten look like so far?
Right now, we have 121 pre-registered at the end of the year. Yeah, yeah. So typically during the summer months, we'll hit somewhere between 30 and 40 that come in, so. We're watching it pretty close.
Wait until our school starts, you'll get another.
Oh, yes, and we have had that happen. Open house would, a handful come and knock us over to having to add another class, so. You just always stay prepared.
We'll take that problem, though.
We will. That's a good problem to have.
Administration reports, next. Everybody is on vacation, that's the administration. Not really, but we'll start with Ms. Ferguson and go around.
I'll start with, Bruce sent me a text and said, just wanted me to talk a little bit about St. Paul. He said, they started summer school today for high school and elementary. He has a team of teachers going to the Renaissance Training this summer, next, next month, he said. And that training was kind of a culture-building training that they did last summer.
That's when they just ended the December training.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
They were very, very, they liked that.
That was a very good gig, I think.
Yeah, I think so too. And so he's taken another team to that, and of course, they'll bring all that back and, and share with the staff.
That'd be great.
And it's been a big help for them, for sure. And then, of course, starting their summer cleaning and maintenance. And then, last thing, I did go down today and look at the bathroom down there, and, you know, they've got it all ripped out, and they cut the concrete floor up and getting ready to bore through the rock, block wall to put the drain pipes in and all that stuff. And they're hoping to have the plumbing done by the end of this week and start framing next week. Have plumbing done, poured, all that, so.
Did we get all that junk? We heard Bobby was talking about had the nails and stuff in, that's a good deal.
Yeah, yeah, all of that's good to go down there, so. And then for me, right now, I'm working on getting all my, all the Perkins funding stuff sent in so that we can get our reimbursements for that. Still waiting on some checks to be cut so I can send that in. That's a pretty big task because there's a lot of steps to that, and they have to have a lot of documentation to be able to get our reimbursement. So just working through that, I've been buging Tina quite a bit, trying to get everything we need. And then I also went to, last week of school, went to the Teaching and Learning Collaborative Meeting down in Little Rock, and they talked a lot about our new standards and gave us some blueprints for those standards. And, and then also talked about the new state assessment that we'll be administering next year. A little bit about the interim assessments, but they don't have math and English interims out right now. They do have science, so we are entertaining the idea of using the science interim assessments because they're content-based, and it gives us a chance to look at what the test is going to be like, give our kids a chance to practice with that test. But I'm sure there's going to be more coming out on that. We do have a, a team of people going July 18th to Arco-op for another training with, about the Cambium. It's actually Atlas is the name, but Cambium is the company that made the test, so. But I think that's it. I'm on vacation next week and pretty excited about it. I just have a lot of highlights this month. Next month, I'll get into the daily grind of what we got going in tech in the summer. But I just want to express that we have an awesome technology team, but also on top of that, we have a, we're blessed with an awesome facility and supportive administration board to be able to pull off some of these events we did last month. We had, you know, band concert, choir concert in the new activity center. We had the kindergarten graduation and high school graduation. And it, I mean, it, it really was an awesome time to be able to utilize the resources and the, and the technology and, and what we have in that building. And so that, we received lots of positive feedback from that. And I just want to thank, you know, my guys for, they stepped up and they made all that happen, you know, it was, we received lots of positive comments and being able to put it up on the video board and, you know, that kind of thing, so. So really, really appreciative of that and the board for, you know, supporting that and us being able to put that off. This morning, we, I, I think I mentioned a couple of months ago, but this morning, the newsletter was released, but we were chosen by our access control company, Paxton, to do a case study on our new activity center for the innovative design and kind of out-of-the-box thinking that we use for how we designed that facility for access control. And so anyways, they pushed out this case study for Huntsville, Arkansas, to their whole worldwide newsletter. And so we got featured on that, so that was really something cool. So that.
Can you give a link or something?
I can share that with you, I should have done that, but yeah, I can do that. So that's just another, you know, we're, we're just really blessed to have the, the crew and the skillset that we have to be able to pull that off, and it's being internationally, or world, you know, worldwide recognized for that. And so that's, and that's really cool. And the last thing, just on the safety and security side of things, I just wanted to touch that we, after much, lots of time, lots of hours, lots of collaboration with law enforcement and our own internal administration of people, we have submitted our School Violence Prevention Program grant. And that is basically funding that we can apply for up to $500,000 to use for school violence and safety aspects. And so we'll know in August if we're awarded that. So that's something that we're hopeful that we'll be able to receive to just continue to kind of build on that. And that's all I have.
Well, we are just finishing up the fiscal year, so looking at applications and budgets for next year in the federal programs, and then wrapping up POs that are still outstanding, making sure that we have money spent where we have to spend it. We have limits on how much carryover we can have in certain accounts. And so I have to watch those really closely this time of year to make sure we stay, you know, kind of, we like to have a little bit of carryover if we can, but we can't have too much. And just looking at end-of-year cleanup stuff.
Well, like Bailey said, we were excited and thankful to get to host our kindergarten graduation in the new activity center. And so I would like to also thank the guys that worked hard to make sure that everything was set up. And so I feel like it was our best ceremony that, you know, we've had since I've been here, so. This week, our kindergarten academy started, so our PK team is working on some readiness, readiness skills with kindergarten, or incoming kindergarteners who signed up. I think they'll be doing four different sessions during the summer months, so we're excited for that and thankful for Tasha for helping us make sure that we can pay those girls for doing it. And we just did a lot of celebrating at the end of the year. Our map data was above what we were hoping for, and so we're just super proud. So brought y'all copies of it if you want it, but we're just proud of our team and all the hard work that they put in because it is paying off.
I will say, kindergarten graders were really cool.
It was.
And BTSO, that just, yes, it was amazing.
It looked great.
Huge triplets trees, photo booths everywhere.
Way to show me up.
That was not me, it was those BTSO girls, they are awesome.
Our kids probably wouldn't have responded so well to Dr. Sue's.
So, well, I just, I was on vacation last week, so just kind of chilled out, take a break. And so I've just been working on tying up some stuff from the school year and working in to hand up community suggestions to, to the new, next year's handbook. So it's kind of what I've been working on. Missy, you need to take it away on the.
Well, to piggyback off that, graduation went well, and I was so nervous, I don't know if y'all knew that, because that's the first one in the building, and I just wanted everything to be perfect. And I, I think it was as perfect as we could have hoped for. Did get a lot of feedback about how it was nice to be in there and, and, and all of that. We're also starting to work on entering the 600-and-some schedules that we put in for kids, so that'll be the rest of the summer for sure. We've also, we're going to start working on the back-to-school PD to the building level and catering to the needs of those people. And then I had the handbook down, so I want to say, page, as far as, we did make a few adjustments on some different things which y'all will see.
It's our busy time of year. Teachers go home, and all of the financial side has to be closed out, and budgeting starts and all of that. So right now, we're just winding down the school year and trying to get all the bills paid and everything that needs to be done this year done before June 30th. So, so it's, it's busy for us right now, but we're trucking along.
Nothing about changing mics is going on.
Nobody mentioned it.
Moving on to new business. We have, the first part is policy adoption. I'm going to kind of take this in segments. We have basically three different things that are being proposed to you. It's all one policy, but I wanted to break it down a little bit and allow you all to ask questions or do anything that you wanted to. But I'm going to start in the back of it, which, if you look at the back of the section, there is one that is titled, or pages that are stapled together, titled Huntsville School District Policy Changes Summary. And that is a, that is a summary of all of the changes that are in the policies that were presented through ASBA. I want to point out basically three things with those policies because one of them is not one of those policies. Policy on that front page, policy 1.23, visits to school property by school board members. This is optional and at board discretion. So it's up to you all to say, we can take it out here tonight and say, all the other policies except that one, or we can leave it in. But I didn't, I didn't want to take it out under the assumption that it shouldn't be in there. So I, go ahead.
Can we discuss it now, or?
Sure can, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I am against adding that, changing that. It is optional. If you look in that other stuff they gave us, it gives more detail. And it basically says that school board members will not be on any campus. It would mostly, it would have to be the parent of a student going to see the teacher, going to see the principal, meeting for, the parent-teacher conferences. I do agree, we shouldn't just pop up, but it, it also, sometimes you need to go to the school. And as long as you check in through the office, I don't see that there's a problem. I don't know that I've heard there's been a problem. I know I went to the high school twice this year to see a specific teacher that I pre-arranged with and knew. I checked in through the office. I was also invited to a CTE meeting, and that, so that was pre-arranged, and the.
Did we add the, I know when I talked to you last, you had to add the request that teacher to it, did we add that? I mean, I think that would need to be added because I've been asked to go.
I, I just don't think we should change the policy. The one we got when we went to, was the one I gave you, was when we went to our training, and it says that, that is the law right now. And that wait until there is a problem, it says, visit, these are the things that a school board member should do. Visit school, district schools and classrooms when students are present no less than annually and attend some events and functions. Where when we were doing our working meeting, we didn't talk about these policies, the lawyer made it kind of sound like you shouldn't go there. And if you did, you should only go if there's, when kids are not present.
Yeah.
And I don't agree with that at all. And at the end of this proposed optional policy, it says, the school board member who is present on school campus for any reason other than the reasons authorized in this policy shall be asked to leave campus. If the board member does not leave after being asked, the board member will be considered a trespasser and local law enforcement will be called respond. I, I don't think this sounds very transparent. And until we have a problem where people are just popping up, and I remember school board members walking through the schools and just looking and seeing what's there. Bobby's on his campus all the time, and we haven't heard any complaints. They're very glad that he's there. So I am against changing this policy. So I don't know how that goes down, but.
Anybody else?
I'm Bill Simonson.
I'm Bill McCallum.
We'll adjust the motion whenever we get to that point.
Any administrators, I mean, have we approached, I mean?
Oh, okay.
Get ready to get.
We try to be very respectful.
I talk it up in front of Chris, but I know it's many.
The other one that I want to point out to you is, so I will say that basically 90% of these, or even more so, are, if there are adjustments to the policies that are existing based off of new legislations that have come out. Does that mean Learns Law or Act, you know, 780 or something like that? You'll see them referenced in this. And most of them made a small change, and it eliminated some language or included some language that was necessary because of those small, those laws. So most of what our work was, or work was to do this, was to go in and make sure that our numbers matched up. You know, if it was an excused absence policy or unexcused, we make sure that those were remaining the same. You know, if it was six, then it's six on the evening policy because you want to make sure that those are, those are correlated the way that they had to. That's, that's the majority of what you're looking at.
So with Learns on hold, would we have to revert something back?
There's a potential of that, and that's how we, that's in the wording of the, of how we present it here tonight. Approved.
Basically pending litigation.
Pending, pending litigation, basically. So going to the third, I guess the fourth page, to start at very top of the fourth page, I guess it's actually the fifth, if you're going from front and back, 4.43 bullying. We had a, we had a request to have one, basically one adjustment to this long, the bullying policy is fairly long. It outlines a lot of different things, but in the very last paragraph, it, it basically says we are going to provide a report to the board every year. The request was to have that say written report. And so in working with PBC and with, with the individual who made the suggestion, we have added that, that one word, written report. So we will then make a written report when we normally just do it verbally. And we have outlined kind of some more descriptions of, of what will be included in that. Now that will not be in the policy, but it will be in our practice of how we report it out. So, you know, the, the thing that we're trying to do is walk this thin and fine line between people who have this, you know, go through this, being identified or not having them identified because it's going to be one thing that happened the entire month of June or whatever, or, you know, one, one bullying incident that, that happened in, in middle school or whatever it may be. So we need to treat, we need to try to make it as to where we protect their identities and they're not identifiable through the, through the reporting of the information. So we've, we've worked with PBC, we've worked with that individual, we try to come up with, how do we get that done and still get out the information that we feel like is pertinent? And I think through all of that, what we decided was we're just gonna add the word written, and then we'll come up with a practice that, in our, in our reporting of it to you all helps, protects, protects identities, but also gives the amount of information that is necessary.
Does each student have a number?
They have a student identification, I guess.
Well, that wouldn't tell male, female or nothing else, so we don't have access to what that number is, right?
Right, but I, it don't give you the numbers out. You can't give off that.
It'll just, it'll just be in real life, their work.
I didn't say it no longer simple file stuff.
For the month of December. And sometimes, just because it says there was an incident, I see, like on a bus, somebody say, oh, they were bullying me, and you find out there's an eighth grader and they're saying a first grader's bullying them, you know?
It's pretty specific on what you have to report out as far as how, how that comes into us. It's not just that kid bullied, you know, said that to the person.
Bullying's a whole lot different today than it was in the seventies, I promise you.
Yes, sir, it is. But you'll see also right after the stapled portion is the sample of that, the actual policy that we've been making adjustments to. And the format form is what I call it of how that would be reported out.
And when it says parents contacted, like that's contacting the parent of the child that's accused of the bullying and the parent of the child that's receiving the bullying.
All part. Then the last thing that I'm gonna point out of this is that when you got handed the ASBA recommendations, there was policy 3.56 and policy 8.46, which were the, they called it rental plea, and that's the Art of Learns Act. But they're, they're not in this, is what I'm pointing at. I'm sorry, they're not in. We went ahead and pulled it because we opted as a group to, to say that we're not going to be able to participate in that. And what that was is that, you know, it basically extended the, the, I just lost the family medical leave for the longer extended time, where the state would pay for half of it. It made it where it was, you paid, it was paid leave at that point. State paid for half of it and then the district was paying for the other half of it. And we did the calculations, the potential of that cost was just too great. What you're gonna see is that probably no district in the state of Arkansas is going to participate in it because of that, because you're paying salary on top of substitute, on top of benefits, on top of substitute benefit. I mean, you're just paying for things that could get out of control easily if you have a rash of, a rash of Family Medical Leave Act. It seems like we have several teachers every year that are on maternity leave and... Right. And so it could potentially be pretty costly to the district to adopt that.
How much did you say, what a cost of this year if we wanted?
Oh, I mean, it was in, it was in the tens of thousands.
I want to say it was like $40, $50,000.
And I'm, we're not trying to, I don't want it to sound like we're trying to not do right by our employees. That's not the, that's not the case. You know, they still get to apply for, for family medical leave. It's all, all of that is still there, it's just the pay aspect.
And they have short-term disability available.
And they can use their sick days and their personal days and all of that in the policy itself, which is still standing. So though, that is the actual recommendations for the policies. And we would pull, in the recommendation, we would pull policy 1.23. So the recommendation that would be made regarding policies would be approved policies except for 1.23.
I have a question because we didn't get to work on these, the working session. Policy 3.40, we had discussed a long time ago, and this is the licensed personnel duties as mandated reporters. And with what we went through previously, we realized in this, there is no consequence if somebody does it other than, there is a potential if the law is involved. But we as a school have no recourse to this, for that. Somebody did not report, we found out. There's nothing, it's not, it doesn't even say like written up, written, I don't know, how, what you do there, what they would say down in ASBA, what they would say would be allowable, but usually like with kids, there's some sort of statement like, at least, this is the minimum up to the maximum, that could happen.
I don't have any good recommendations on that, I apologize. I mean, I can go back and look, or I can go back to ASBA and see what they say in regards to should we, should we add things to that policy or not.
Something is...
Easiest avenue was for individuals to report ethics violations through the state. And that would potentially do that through ethic standard two. If I remember right, I guess I don't remember which one.
I guess.
I think it's two. Which then would go for an investigation through the state department and through state board protection.
But that is true because they changed that, and it's gone straight to them. So there is something.
There is, yes.
Have you guys had any questions over both policies? So I need to work.
Oh, no, no, sorry. Sorry, not yet, no, no, no.
Just kidding.
Sorry, so I'll go back to the second page of this, the classified salary schedule summary notes. We are seeking, classified salary is part of salary, salary schedule is part of the potential changes to policy. So we are seeking through cooperation with CPPC, a reduction of days from 245 to 240, from eight, 185 days to 180, and 205 to 200 for those that it applies to, which would be the assistant food service director, cook cafeteria, or excuse me, except those. So basically what we did is we looked at how can we potentially increase their pay without actually, since we didn't have our numbers ready and we won't have them until August to be able to say, okay, we can actually put this amount of money towards a bonus or this amount of money towards a raise for our classified staff. A way to do that then is to reduce the number of days, but don't reduce the salary. So the salary schedule would stay, stay the same, but the days contracted would be reduced. And so we are, we are asking for that, for those days that I just listed out. There were, there are in our current salary schedule, four areas that we didn't feel like could be reduced because of their student contact days and the number of days that they're working already was just too slim. It was, it was a slim margin as it could be. It couldn't be reduced. And that was the assistant food service cook, assistant food service director slash cook, cafeteria supervisor, cook, and preventative maintenance. So those four areas, we are seeking to approve a 50 cent hour increase for those lanes. 50 cent per hour increase in those four lanes. And then finally, there's two lanes, just in cleanup, that have no people in them. And when I talked to Harry, he said, we wouldn't put somebody in that lane anyway anymore. And that is a mechanic, which is a 190 day contracted position, and service, which is a 190 day contracted position. So we are asking for the elimination of that in our classified staff salary schedule.
Why, why would we not put somebody in the mechanic?
He said, well, right now they're all 240. And so what that, he said originally that was a St. Paul, that, that potential was in St. Paul, and that that person now works 240 because of summer school and, you know, there's enough work to have that person there the entire time. So if we had another mechanic added at Huntsville, we'd have, we'd put them on 240 because there's enough work. It's not like that position's not there or that maintenance is not there or mechanic or whatever, it's just they're there on a different contract. Correct. So we're really just sort of eliminating that contract.
Eliminating, yeah. There's nobody in it and then there's no, as, as in a discussion with Eric, there's no need for that lane right now, the way that it's standing.
Are we still going to be working towards, like, oh, right, I know this is a raise that I...
No, our...
Stay on the paycheck raise.
Final step in all of this is to, is to work towards a actual pay increase across the board. And I don't know what that would be, and I can't tell you. The earliest it would be, it would be August or September, and that would take, you know, CPPC and it would take addendums to contracts and it will, it'll be a little bit of a headache, but it'll be working, so.
Is that what we're still working towards then? Yes, that goal.
Yes, yeah, this is, these were the first steps that we felt like we could comfortably take. This is gonna cost the district, because one last thing that I didn't do, that I didn't mention is that bus drivers were going from 178 contracted days to 180. They already come in on one extra day to do in-service, we do another day at the end of the year to do something with them or even before school started. We can find, we can do something with them to be able to get them to 180. Just looks better, that puts everybody at 180, 205 or, or 200, not 205 or 240. So total, that does cost, though. I mean, that, with 50 cent increase and then adding extra days for those, those individuals, is right at, with our current staffing, it is right at $25,000 to do this, which is, which is very, you know, everybody felt comfortable with that. You know, Tina did, Mary did, Matt, when we were looking at all of these potentials, that was very comfortable with them, what we wanted to do. When you start adding dollars across the board, that's when you start getting into the hundreds of thousands, and that's when we get a little bit more nervous, and that's when we have to make our decision very wisely. Feel like, especially after this month's revenue and expenditures and what you saw in our projection report, we feel like that's going to be handled and very possible at the start of the next school year when everything is finalized, specifically in August and September. But until then, I didn't feel like this is our start. So the, after that summary note, the last few pages that I'm pointing to is the actual updated salary schedule for the classified staff that will reflect the taking of that, of those days down. The elimination of those lanes and specifically in the transportation department and the addition of days for those individuals that had addition of that score, the increase of 50 cents. This is how we're reading the policy manual list. So with all of that being said, I will entertain a motion for the, for the approval of the classify, or excuse me, of the policy updates, including the classified salary schedule and adjustments excluding, so it would have to be stated this way, I apologize, excluding policy 1.23.
Which we still have that policy, we just don't have it updated.
No, ma'am, it's a, it is a new policy.
No. Are there any more questions with it? Nope, okay. I need a motion to approve the additions and revisions to the HSC policy manual as presented omitting policy 1.23. These policies will be effective July 1st, 2023. Policies which are contingent on the Learns Act will be instituted pending court action. First by Nick, second by C, all in favor?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yep.
That was a lot, I know. Next is the approval of the integrity proposal. We are at the stage now where we can, and Mr. John is here, Coleman is here to answer any questions about it. We are at the stage, having gone through all of the processes, that, you know, we are now ready to seek approval for signing the contract pending legal review. The things that were involved in that, the changing of the lights, the changing of water boiler, you know, water heaters, water fixtures, and window replacements in certain locations are still all there. It's very feasible financially for us to do it through the Arkansas Energy Office loan at basically no interest rate loan for 10 to 15 years, depending on what they say. Either way, it's very feasible for us to, to take that into account. I don't want to get too complicated, but if we do things the right way, we can pay it off very easily. So anyway, Mr. Coleman is here to answer any questions that, that may still be lingering about it, but I would take a recommenda, or I would like to recommend that we, take a motion, I want to say this right, sorry, to approve the integrity energy proposal for superintendent signature upon legal counsel's review and verification of contract.
Bailey, I know you've been here, do you have any questions over it?
No, he and I went over it.
Okay. That's St. Paul. Anybody else? So I move, move to approve the integrity energy proposal as presented for review by legal counsel and the superintendent signature upon legal counsel's verification of the contract. My Bobby, second by Nick, all in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, thank you. Last new business is our approval of our blanket accident policy. This is an annual thing that we do, is for renewal... This is an annual thing that we do, is for renewal. Mainly this is for athletics, and for those in grade seven through twelve. It's a supplemental policy for those who are injured. It'll pay a little bit after main insurance pays what it pays. This is standard, though. We see that it's a cost of nine thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. It did not increase from last year. It's the same as it was last year.
Anybody say? All right, Connie, seconded. Motion, all in favor?
Thank you. Transfer requests. We have one transfer request from the district. I would entertain a motion to approve transfer requests as presented.
Can I get a motion to approve transfer requests? Josh, Nick, all in favor? Next, first one. At this time, we're going to go into executive session to go over hires and promotions.
I have to take care.
Okay.
I would entertain a motion to approve personnel resignations hired transfers as.
I move to approve the personnel resignations as presented. I get the motion.
Thank you very much.
Motion made. Second, my seat. All in favor?
Okay. Personnel resignations: Matthew Williams, high school coach/teacher, June 30, 2023; Kendall Fisher, intermediate school teacher, June 30, 2023; Richard Scott, intermediate school special education teacher, June 30, 2023; Mary Beth Ivy, middle school teacher, June 30, 2023; Sophia Scoggins, Watson Primary teacher, June 30, 2023; Jonathan Benson, high school teacher, June 30; Lindsey Mauer, Watson Primary, June 30. Classified resignations: LaDonna K, accounts payable, June 30, 2023; Mike K, maintenance, June 30, 2023; Johnny Watkins, custodian, May 23, 23; Ruth Zapata, high school food service, May 11, 2023; Kathy Lyman, intermediate school paraprofessional, June 30, 2023; Shannon Cook, Watson Primary paraprofessional, June 30, 2023; Debbie Orneliasson, Huntsville Intermediate School Food Service, June 30, 2023; Judy Siegel, Huntsville Middle School Food Service, June 30, 2023; Glenda Willis, Watson Primary custodian, June 30, 2023; and Mark Graham, Huntsville High School custodian, June 30, 2023. Hires: Certified Landon Lines, pending certification, HIS teacher, 190-day contract, July 1, 2023; Lindsey Hart, Huntsville Intermediate School teacher, 190-day contract, July 1, 2023. I'm going to -- you can assume that all these are 190 unless I say otherwise. I'll put it that way. Carly Spears, Watson Primary teacher, July 1; Courtney Ashby, Watson Primary teacher, July 1; Darren Waddell, Huntsville High School teacher, July 1; Sarah Dowdell, Huntsville Middle School Intermediate School Assistant Principal, 240-day contract, July 1; Kristin Pennington, Huntsville High School Business teacher, July 1; David Preston, athletic director -- excuse me, David Preston Jr., athletic director, 240-day contract, July 1; Eric Henderson, head football coach, July 1; Tammy Guidry, Huntsville Intermediate School teacher, July 1; classified Megan Leffwich, high school paraprofessional, 180-day contract, July 1; Gary Ditmore, transportation route driver, July 1; Mark Henry, transportation route driver, July 1; Blaine Coger, director of maintenance and custodial, 240-day contract, July 1 or earlier if we can get him in; Jill Head, director of child nutrition, 240-day contract, July 1 or earlier; Shania Lau, I think I said that right, Huntsville High School nutrition staff cafeteria, July 1. Transfers: Certified Savannah Cartmel, from HIS teacher to ESOL instructor, 190-day contract, July 1. Classified transfers: Brittany Sparks from migrant educational instructional aide lane to ISS virtual lane, 180-day contract, July 1; Michael Roach from interim director of custodial maintenance to maintenance inventory specialist, 240-day contract, July 1; Shannon Wood from accounts receivable reception to accounts payable, July 1; Janine Dennis from Huntsville Intermediate School Special Education Paraprofessional to accounts receivable receptionist, July 1; April McCullough, food service, Watson Primary to food service Huntsville Intermediate, July 1; Alicia Davis from food service middle school to food service Watson Primary, July 1. Now everyone on the section then.
Does anybody have anything else to add to this discussion before we adjourn?
I would just like to say thank you to the people that have turned in resignations, what a great job they've done. Ms. Cutie, I worked with her my whole career. She's done an excellent job in food service. Kathy Lyman's been a great paraprofessional. I don't know everybody but and the custodians. Johnny's been asked for better custodian and I'm sure everybody else. I worked with math, science, and they've done a good job and I appreciate them spending their time here in this community.
Anybody else?
I would like to address one thing about the last working meetings and the lawyer. Basically, I got the feeling and the people called the next day that he said, "Don't talk to any teachers, don't talk to anybody, blah, blah, blah."
We don't call black people.
Yeah, I was going to say, we're not the first stop. I do agree with him on one thing. We're not the first stop. But when you've gone to wherever you're supposed to go and you still do not have answers that -- I'm not saying to get your way. I'm saying answers that don't make sense. Please come to one of us. If I have to recuse myself, there's six other people sitting here that I know can do the right job and do the right thing. But we can't do it if we don't know what's going on. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else? Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, my God.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you very much.